Call the meeting to order. Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
First up, we have some recognitions. Go ahead and turn it over to Sandy.
All right, thank you. I'll ask our two guests to come up to the microphone, please. The Hudson School District was notified it has received the 2019 Best Communities for Music Education Award last spring. The award program recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education part of a well-rounded education. Designations are made to districts and schools that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. With us this evening are representatives from Schmidt Music, Paul Thompson VP, and Peter Schmidt manages the orchestra division and a Hudson High School graduate. Schmidt Music has graciously framed certificates for all of our music teachers, our accomplice, and our band parent group. And as Schmidt always says in their tagline, "Music makes a difference." So, welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Sandy. Well, a warm welcome from Schmidt Music on this snowy, cold night. It's great to be here celebrating your ninth year of winning this award. And with me tonight is Peter Schmidt. And Peter, do you have a few words you might like to say?
Sure. So, this is a real full-circle experience for me, being a graduate of Hudson High and then being in front of you. And it's an honor, and I congratulate all of you on achieving this award. From our industry, it is a real achievement, and hold your hats to that in supporting music education. Because we feel, as a company, it's a very important thing for all of your students to have access to, and we hope to help support that in the future.
Just a couple of more words about the award itself. This award is sponsored by the NAMM Organization, which is the National Association of Music Merchants, which is about $17 billion music products, which is worldwide. And so, they put this initiative together in 1998. And so, only about 4% of the districts that apply over the course of a year win. And so, in Minnesota and our surrounding territories, only 4% of the districts have won. And kudos to the person that filled out the survey because it's extensive, and a lot of work goes in through the help of the University of Kansas and Wordcraft that kind of put this together. And so, it's a really, it is an honor to win this. It's not easy to win, and we're really thrilled to be here. We do have plaques of recognition here on awards, and if we missed anybody or we misspelled a name, please let us know. We'll be happy to make that right for you. But there again, thanks again for having us, and congratulations on nine years. And if we could, we'd like to hand out a few awards right now, real quick.
While they're doing it, is there any board members that want to have any comments on that?
When they get their awards, I would presume. Appreciate it, sir.
Rob's not here.
Oh, this is Rob.
Rob, right. This is Jamie here. James.
We often refer to them as the Bobs. Like movie office face.
Can we get the group from the music department up as well?
And your awards are over there, too? Want to grab them?
All right, let's go, board members. Well, yes, can get out in front there and maybe the music staff with you, and I'll tuck behind where nobody can see me. I have a face for radio.
Yeah, they can come over here, and that'd be great. They're the ones that, they are the amazing ones.
That's right. Give me a mic while I get it out.
We can do like a mash.
One, two, three, smiles. Another one. All right, and then I've got two.
All right, ready? One, two, three. And one more. All right, ready? One, two, three. Perfect, we got it.
Congratulations. Yeah, wonderful. Amazing.
If you can't see the camera, then you need to.
Thank you so much. We do have an orchestra concert tonight, so we do have several members of our music staff at a concert this evening.
Okay.
And then, they will be taking the rest of the plaques back to their colleagues as well.
Yeah, I was just curious, how many more would have come had we not had the orchestra? I mean, how many?
There's three orchestra teachers.
Okay.
So, Britt Peterson, Rachel Knipfer, and Jack Young at the high school. And let's see, there's probably four other elementary music teachers, and Kalen Brown and Donna at the, in band, the band teachers at the middle school as well. Yep. Oh, and then with the choir teachers at the high school, yes.
Many thanks to our music staff for the work that they do, and, you know, we're just glad that we can support that work, so.
Congratulations so well, wow. Correct.
That's right. Thanks a lot. Thank you. All right. Next up, then, we have the Holton Elementary Award.
All right. We're excited to announce that Holton Elementary has earned a Bronze Level for the Wisconsin School Health Whole School, Whole Community, Whole Child Award. In the announcement letter, it states that this award signifies Holton Elementary School's commitment to providing students a safe and positive learning environment where they can be successful. With us this evening is Sue Helmers, Holton Principal, to share some of the highlights of their work. Thanks, Sue.
Thank you. Yes, Holton received the Bronze Award based on an application that I completed, I think it was a year ago, I had to kind of dig back in. But it was some newly implemented mindfulness things that Holton had done with a focus on gratitude. We did some gratitude journals, some gratitude notes to others. We built in some movement into the day. We did a little bit of test prep, so to speak, for the Forward the State Assessment, just kind of teaching kids some self-regulation and calming strategies, and then some tips in our family newsletter for families to help support the same ideas at home. In addition, we continue to support some of our kind of longstanding healthy habits and activities that we have at Holton. Our outdoor learning is something we've continued to emphasize with picnic tables and places where kids can work outside. Our newly, in our newly-built art bench area where classes can go, our garden, which runs March through November. We have a garden club weekly where kids can sign up during their recess time with a master gardener, summer volunteers, and they collaborate with our health and nutrition services to serve some of the things that the kids harvest in the fall. And then, our Health and Wellness Student Committee, who, some of the things that they have done this past year have made a movement break video to teach kids some of our tips to get ready for ice skating. So, I haven't seen it yet, but they were telling me they, the kids are creating a song to help kids remember what they need to do to be safe when they go ice skating. They've, we're creating a walking club this spring for students to do during their lunchtime, a playground obstacle course where they have to go through and do things, just to keep kids moving and active when they are outside, brain break activity cards for classroom teachers, and then they take, continue to take monthly feedback from the kids on their committee to just continue to increase engagement and just overall improvement of our outside recess time. So, the combination of all these things, trying to keep our kids healthy, moving, and just really ready to learn, I think, has helped Holton achieve the things that we've been able to achieve. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Sue, for your efforts here. Good job. I was just curious, was this a statewide deal?
Yes.
And do you know, like, how many achieve the level? We had some idea with the.
I don't. I was, the awards ceremony was last Friday in the Dells, and I wasn't able to go, and so I didn't get all of the details about the award or the other participants or recipients. So, I don't know the answer to that, sorry.
Okay. But definitely a worthwhile endeavor to pursue, you know, the whole child health, so.
And a lot of it is things we've just continued to just maintain, nothing brand-new, but they, you know, we've received recognition for that as well, that we're continuing. They're not sort of these stabs that we do, but we're maintaining them throughout and sustaining those kinds of beliefs and activities throughout our year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I guess that concludes our recognitions. Do we have any citizens' requests to speak?
No.
All right. Since we have none, well, we're going to do a little shuffle of the agenda items. We're going to go, since we have guests, to explain the auditor's report. I thought we should kick off with that, and then we'll get into superintendent's reports, follow that. So, we'll get the most exciting out of the way first. There you go.
Absolutely.
Well, hopefully, it's not too exciting, but.
Most exciting, but most uneventful.
Okay, there we go.
But I would enjoy your input.
We'll do our best. Lock the expectations.
Exactly. All right. A lot of familiar faces here, but I'm Brock Guy, in partner charge of your annual audit. This is Jonathan Sherwood. He's the person that runs the show for you guys when we're here onsite and wrapping up the audit. I'm going to keep it real brief like we have in the past here, but we're at your disposal tonight. So, if you have any questions on anything, feel free to ask us. We'll try to clarify anything we can. Should have a handout. So, here's a copy of the actual report. I think I saw some bound copies. I'm not sure if those are the reports, if you look that close, but you should have a two-page handout as well, hopefully, in your packet material. I got copies of it, too. So, as in the past, everything we need to talk to you about or want to talk to you about is on this summer. Again, we brought the other materials with us as well, though, if you wanted to explore any of that stuff as well. So, I'll just start you out, talk about some of the high points from the reports we issued, and then Jonathan will touch on some of the financial highlights here for fiscal year 2019. This is the first meeting I'm doing for the entire season here, so that's a little earlier than we have been the last few years as well, for a variety of reasons. Should be very reflective on your staff as well. They did a very nice job this year. Some of the information became available earlier as well from the state. That's been a real holdup now for about three, four years where we might not, one year, we didn't even receive the information until January. So, we got that at the end of, beginning of October, and it was able then to pull everything together in the normal timeframe, if you look back in a number of years. So, it's nice to be here in December, talking about the information. And the results have been very good here as well for 2019. So, first thing I'll talk about on item number one, it's not what's on the screen here, but in your handout, that is the auditor's opinion. So, the big booklet itself has a report up front that talks about if there's anything unique or things, problems, it would be disclosed in what's called the auditor's report up front. You received an unmodified opinion. That's what you strive to achieve. It's the highest level you can get. Last couple of years, there's been new standards, maybe, that need some explanation, so there's been additional paragraphs in there. So, if you were to compare that report to the booklet anyway, to last year, the last few years, you're going to see some extra wording in the prior years, but not this year. So, good news there. We do issue a management letter in addition to the materials as well. You'll find the reportable items at the very back of the big booklet in your financial statement. There's one item we included there. It's been there for many, many years. It's very, very common. It's on annual financial reporting under GAAP. GAAP's one of those acronyms that define the standards that you have to follow and that go into that booklet. And, but basically, what that is saying is you don't have a staff of CPAs onsite that draft the booklet for you. We do that as part of our audit. We do that for all of 180 governments. There's only two that draft it themselves because they have former auditors on staff. But it's almost entirely common to have your auditor draft it for you. If you do the standard, just say you have to put it in there. So, that's why it's there. It's not necessarily a red flag for you as board members to indicate there's a problem. It's just a full disclosure thing that the district does not produce its own financial statement. They review it, they look it over, they approve it. All that's part of the process. They just simply don't draft it. So, something we put in there. But other than that, no other issues for us to report this year. That's very good, because you don't want things like maybe compliance findings associated with your grants or things of that nature that could cause issues on the funding side. So, none of that happened in this particular year, so the second item on here, compliance, there were no findings there as well. The last item in this section up here just talks about a couple other issues, not issues, but other items associated with your audit. So, there is a required filing in September with DPI, district submitted some data. We verify the data, so that happens. Technically, it's called a compilation. That happens in September, no problems there. And then, there's a filing with the Fed, the federal government, that happens after the audit. It's technically not due for about three more months, but we had those started this week, so those will all be out for our districts here over the next couple of weeks. It's a filing with the feds online. So, with that, overall, very, very good results from a report standpoint. Any questions on that before we talk about the numbers? Make sense?
So, good. Well, I can dive right into item number two and start talking some numbers, and I promise to keep it high-level, so your eyes don't blaze over there for you. The real quick note before I start talking about the general fund is typically internally, you'll probably say general fund, and just think Fund 10 for general fund. For the purposes of our reports, we're required to combine both of those, and the purposes of the summary, this is both 10 and 27, so the general fund and special education is all rolled up into these numbers that you're seeing in front of you. And as far as looking at kind of a trend, is usually what we like to put together these last, this four-year summary for you, and some items that might just jump out at you, and I can add a couple of comments there for you. Up on the general fund balance sheet summary, you'll notice that the due from other governments line looks like it increased significantly from the prior year to the 2018 numbers. The primary cause of that is just actually the timing when you submit your, when the district submitted the federal grant reimbursement requests and state grant reimbursement requests. Those happen too close to year-end of that 630 timeline. The checks just don't get back to the district in time, so there's just a significant receivable that's sitting there at the end of the year, very common. And I did also note that the total increase in state and federal funding in, when it came to operating grants, capital grants, actually increased by about 1.2 million in total for the whole year as well. So, what you're seeing there, that's just kind of more of reflection on the timing of when those reimbursement requests were submitted. The other item that you'll notice under the liability side of things is the number that jumps out there is under the payables and other accruals. You'll notice that there's a balance of $7.5 million there as compared to prior year of $4.6 million. The main driver of that is the lingering capital projects that were still in process as of 630. And in this case, there was about $2.2 million in construction-related items that had been started but not yet completed by 630. And in this case, it's actually all retainage, so all of those punch list items where maybe the work had already been done, but yet, you know, the final checklists weren't finalized. So, we were withholding payment, which you're allowed to do on any contractor request. So, $2.2 million of that balance is related to those items. And then, the comment that I'll just direct you to right away is underneath that fund balance section towards the bottom third of the page. Under the committed section, the secondary space, you'll also notice that that amount decreased. So, it was a planned spend down. We had these additional secondary space projects that we had in progress, and prior to 2019 fiscal year-end, we had set aside those dollars that, you know, we're going to have this set aside. We had a plan for those dollars that were committed for the secondary space project. In 2019, we actually spent those dollars down. So, that's why you're seeing that related decrease of your fund balance, because you incurred that project, you've spent those down, and you've got $1.8 million remaining as of 630-19 left to be incurred for similar items. Other than that, on the balance sheet side of things, I don't see anything else that I'll draw your attention to as far as trends. I will make some comments over that first shaded line that you see there of the unassigned fund balance. The total this year, we actually have an increase in that line, which is a positive trend or a positive item to highlight for you. So, we increased from 17.6 million up to the 18.6 million. And when we're typically looking at, you know, what is the financial health of a district, we usually look at that line and then do a comparison as to what are your total expenditures for the year, and we calculate the ratio all the way down at the bottom highlighted line there for you. And so, it's basically a measure of what are your true unrestricted reserves of the district. And we compare that to what are your total general fund, you know, costs to educate the students in Fund 10 and Fund 27. So, the total expenditures to date is 73 million, which is a little bit up from last year. And then, we take the ratio of those two numbers and calculate that, the bottom number there on the page of 25.5%. So, those are your true unassigned, unspent reserves of the district as a comparison of total revenue, or total expenditures for the whole district. Your fund balance policy states between 25 to 30% is what the fund balance policy of the district is. So, you're definitely meeting your overall policy that you have there. The other thing that I will note for you in this number, and I, again, I'll go a little bit deeper than I normally do for you, but in your total expenditures, like I just noted, you had $73 million in expenditures in fiscal year 2019. I will draw your attention again that you had that basically one-time non-recurring capital items are also recur, are also built into that $73 million. So, if you're comparing your 73 million down to last year's number of 66 million, it's a little bit skewed in the current year because you had that, that construction activity is built into that 73 million. So, keep that in mind as to why you're looking between your two bottom numbers, your two percentages down there, 26.6% last year versus 25%. So, all else being equal, you are roughly about the same as you were in 2018. Other than that, that's all the notes that I had for you on the general fund. So, I'll turn your attention to page two or item number three. These are all the remaining funds and all the other activity that has, that occurs throughout the district. So, the item number three is your special revenue funds, which are used to account for the specific revenue sources that are restricted for any given purpose. So, in the top section there, you've got your education trust, your food service fund, and then what I commonly call the Fund 80s, your education and community recreation funds. Has been a noted trend over the last number of years of all of these activities have been drawing down the fund balances for a number of years, and I know that administration's well aware of that. A lot of times, it was a planned spend down of some fund balance, especially in the food service fund. To be expected when we have major construction, again, those food service-related capital items are being charged appropriately to Fund 50 or your food service fund. So, it, nothing of concern here. Yes, it is a declining trend in the overall fund balance, but so long as there's a plan and it's well-known, known that that is the issue, and, you know, it's all budgeted for that way, there aren't any concerns in this decreasing trend. The item number four for you is your debt service fund. So, your Fund 38 and 39 for, accounting for all of the required debt principal and interest payments. Your resulting fund balance there, you'll see from 2016 into 2018, that trend has increased quite a bit. Obviously, it makes sense when we go and levy, you know, significant dollars in order to finance the construction projects. In 2019, you'll see a downward trend, which makes sense because we are paying off more than we're actually borrowing. In 2019, there were new, were no new issuances of debt. You just had your straight payoff of principal and interest requirements to the tune of about $7.4 million in total between principal and interest. So, that's the decrease there. Also, in, to move along to item number five for you, capital projects funds. A significant spend down in fund balance. Again, it's to be expected as your construction projects for the middle school, the auditorium, stadium, and the big high school project, they're all coming down and winding down here. You do have a remaining fund balance as of 630 of $431,000 in Fund 49. Last, that I was, had conversations with Tim and his team, those numbers are true leftover dollars that we, that had not been committed to any one specific project. I know that there was some discussion as to, they are going to be spent for capital projects, the same types of items, but the actual, what projects they were going to be hadn't yet been decided. So, they're, that's why they're still sitting in that fund, and they should be either spent in 2020 or folded back into the general fund or used to pay off the corresponding debt issuances. Speaking of debt, we can move into item number six. This is the long-term obligations, everything that's outstanding as of 630. Between 2018 column and the 2019 column in that first section, you'll notice that it decreased from 90.8 million dollars down to 86.4 million. Again, that just represents the required principal payments that were required to be made during fiscal year 19. As we move down the other, in the other long-term debt section, a couple of items kind of to call your attention to. In these next items, it's basically just an informational aspect only, that, yes, they are true liabilities of the district, but they aren't going to be anything that you're going to take into consideration when it comes to budgeting for in your various funds. What I mean by that specifically is your other post-employment benefits and the state life insurance and WRS pension liabilities. As Brock alluded to early, those second two items are basically the district's participation in those statewide programs, and it's the district's share of the resulting liabilities, the district's share of those total liabilities of the whole system. The other post-employment benefits payable, that is a liability that's measured annually by an actuary, and this is representing the true unfunded estimation of what those liabilities would be. So, it's all the OPEB benefits that we've agreed to as a district, but yet, they're not covered by the assets that are set aside in that trust. So, that increased just due to the actuarial calculation. There were no changes in benefits or anything that caused that to increase. It's just basically how the actuary measured those against the liability, against the trust assets that are out there. The other item to note real quick is the pension liability. You'll see that one kind of, you know, it wasn't there last year, but it's there again this year. That has to do, again, with the whole system in total. In 2018, it's actually, it was overfunded. There was 100, it was 102% funded at the state level. Well, this year, kind of switched the other way, and we have to report the liability because it was 96.4% funded at the state level. So, that one flips back and forth every year, being the WRS system total. I'll expound on that probably longer than I need to, because there's a lot of work that goes into calculating those numbers and putting them on your audit report, so. The last comment that I'll have for you is the last two lines there, or last three lines, excuse me. The equalized value, the general obligation debt limit, and then the obligation debt as a percentage of your statutory debt limit. Wisconsin statutes are saying that, or basically state that a district can borrow up to 10% of the equalized value in any given year. So, that roughly calculates to $422 million that the district could go out and borrow under state statute. Of that total legal limit, you're using about 20.4% of that limit, which, yes, as you can see, is, you know, it's higher than it had been compared to 2016. Then, we went and took a bunch of debt out for the capital projects, and now we're starting to pay that down. So, with that trend continuing, I would expect to see that percentage decrease over the coming years. A lot of information that I came at you fast and furious for. Any questions, comments, concerns that we could potentially respond back to?
All right, board members, do you have any comments or questions for our auditors?
Mr. President, so, I don't know anything about auditing, but when you start, what's the first thing that auditors look at that is going to signal an institution's doing all the right stuff, or maybe, you know, there's some issues?
What I mean by that specifically is your other post-employment benefits and the state life insurance and WRS pension liabilities. As Brock alluded to early, those second two items are basically the district's participation in those statewide programs, and it's the district's share of the resulting liabilities, the district's share of those total liabilities of the whole system. The other post-employment benefits payable, that is a liability that's measured annually by an actuary, and this is representing the true unfunded estimation of what those liabilities would be. So it's all the OPEB benefits that we've agreed to as a district, but yet they're not covered by the assets that are set aside in that trust. So that increased just due to the actuarial calculation. There were no changes in benefits or anything that caused that to increase. It's just basically how the actuary measured those against the liability, against the trust assets that are out there. The other item to note real quick is the pension liability. You'll see that one kind of, you know, it wasn't there last year, but it's there again this year. That has to do, again, with the whole system in total. In 2018, it's actually, it was overfunded, it was 102% funded at the state level. Well, this year, kind of switched the other way, and we have to report the liability because it was 96.4% funded at the state level. So that one flips back and forth every year, being the WRS system in total. I'll expand on that probably longer than I need to because there's a lot of work that goes into calculating those numbers and putting them on your audit report. The last comment that I'll have for you is the last two lines there, or last three lines, excuse me. The equalized value, the general obligation debt limit, and then the obligation debt as a percentage of your statutory debt limit. Wisconsin statutes are saying that, or basically state that a district can borrow up to 10% of the equalized value in any given year. So that roughly calculates to $422 million that the district could go out and borrow under state statute. Of that total legal limit, you're using about 20.4% of that limit, which, yes, as you can see, is, you know, it's higher than it had been compared to 2016. Then we went and took a bunch of debt out for the capital projects, and now we're starting to pay that down. So with that trend continuing, I would expect to see that percentage decrease over the coming years. A lot of information that I came at you fast and furious for. Any questions, comments, concerns that we could potentially respond back to?
All right, board members, do you have any comments or questions for our auditors?
Mr. President, so I don't know anything about auditing, but when you start, what's the first thing that auditors look at that is going to signal an institution's doing all the right stuff or maybe, you know, there's some issues?
Take a crack at that. I don't know if it's necessarily the first thing we look at, but, you know, we dive into the numbers right away. So there's a number of our clients, school districts are including this bunch, where maybe you get in there and you find out things don't necessarily reconcile out. That would be a significant problem. We'd probably have to note that in an audit report, for example, if it was significant enough, didn't have that issue here. So, you know, if it wasn't tied or rolling back to last year, that's kind of the way accounting has to work, yeah, that starting point that ties to last year. Big unreconciled accounts, timely issues with that. There'd be issues we'd look for there. Another big part of what we do as an audit, during an audit, though, is looking at the compliance of stuff. You have a lot of grants, state and federal grants that you spend. You're subject to a lot of rules, and we're responsible for taking a look at those to see, to make sure you're compliant. We don't test every dollar, we don't test every program, but we do sampling of a large enough population, our sample of your population to get a feel for how you guys handle those things. So there's times, and any district can fall into this, maybe it's a new requirement, maybe it's a new grant or something of that nature, new contract, where you might stumble and not meet a requirement. That would be another area that would trigger, and it's something we try to look for early in the process. Again, we didn't have any of that nature report this year, which is all good news.
Any other questions? All right, seeing and hearing none, I want to thank you, gentlemen, for coming another year and giving us good news, and hope to see you back this year, this next year with a similar report. So, thank you.
If you think of any questions after this point, you can rattle through I, Admin, and Finance.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie, I'd just like to note that Tim and his staff are the ones that are responsible for putting all of these paperwork together to get to the auditors. The auditors are, you know, we use them as a resource as well. You know, as things come up or as we are in new situations, as he said, new requirements and things, we often will check in with them, hey, is this the appropriate way to handle this or that? They're great to work with, but Tim and his staff have done a outstanding job. The financial health of the district is strong. I do want to comment just on the, it looks like our percent fund balance is going down, but part of that is because our expenditures went up in order to spend down the, for the capital projects. So that's why it looked like it took quite the hit on the percentage from 26.6 down to 25.5, and it really didn't dive quite that much, but well aware of it. And then also, like they said, you know, we've been piling, pile is not a great word. We've been saving money for things like food service upgrades and things along those lines that we, you know, as part of the projects and things like that. But even as you saw here, when the construction projects were all said and done, we still didn't even spend everything. And I don't know how common that is, that you guys see that districts just leave a half a million dollars sitting. I don't think it's all that common. Usually, it's they're digging into reserves to try to find more, and so I think that's a testament to the team as well, that just because we have it doesn't mean we spend it, just because we tend to spend when we think we need to, and we don't spend when we don't think we need to. So, but just thank you to our finance department and to our auditors as they continue to help us through this journey. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tim, and your department. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Safe travels.
All right, now we'll resume the order of the agenda with superintendent's report. We have four, and I'll let Nick take over with coming wherever he wants to start.
You bet. So...
There we are, back on. So I want to give an update on the facility advisory committee. I, as we talked about at the last work session, the administration narrowed the architectural firms to come in and present a proposal to the whole board next Monday night to help lead this advisory committee in this process. The three firms that we narrowed it down to were Wald Architects, HSR Architects, and Bray Architects for our three firms. So we, as you can see, I did attach the RFP to the process. You can see how we're going to break down those interviews, very similar to what we did when we hired an architectural firm back when we tackled secondary space. We'll also be getting those rubrics together. I think people found those quite helpful when we had kind of rubrics as we evaluated the facility proposals. And a couple of things I just want to clarify, because I know there's been some questions since the last meeting. The RFP is, it's a bifurcated RFP, and that's like my new favorite word since Jamie started using it. And apparently, that's what people in the legal industry use all the time. But the first part of the proposal is really work, the firm is putting together the proposal as how it relates to leading a group of, basically engaging the community to look at both of our deferred maintenance projects that have been, or capital projects that have been listed as Kraus Anderson, and the district went through that a few years back, but then also the educational adequacy piece. And so how do they engage that group to get to a point where then they make a recommendation to the board? And so then the board then gets to decide what to do. And so that's kind of, you know, the part one of the RFP. And then the part, part two, or the second component is, it is no secret that if we were to continue down the path of trying to tackle even just the deferred maintenance items that the board approved that deferred maintenance 10-year plan three years, four months ago at the meeting, that had almost $55 million worth of projects in it, that we don't have that built into our budget. We don't have the ability to just kind of pay as we go. And so there is the potential that there may be, may be a need for potentially a referendum. And so we wanted to be very upfront with people, and that was part of it, is if we were going to have a committee or a firm that was going to lead us through this community engagement process, and if the committee recommended some type of referendum, and if the board decided they wanted to follow through with that, what would that look like? Or what could that timeline look like using the same architectural firm, so we're not going right back out to RFP again and going through this process? And so that's why there's two parts, and the reason we didn't just wrap it all together is because there may, the committee may come up with a recommendation that doesn't involve a referendum, or the board may say, I don't, you know, we don't want to go to that, or whatever it is. And so we wanted to make sure there was not a predetermined outcome to the committee, but we wanted to make sure that we had all the information upfront so that as we're picking a firm to work with, you guys have that, have that information. And so, but like I said, it's, we do ongoing maintenance on our facilities. We have maintenance budgets. We don't bring maintenance things to the board. That's probably more of the weed level type of items. But a lot of the things that were in the capital, basically the deferred capital maintenance plan are big-ticket items that would typically come to the board. I mean, if we're going to replace roofs or boilers or things like that, that are hundreds of thousands of dollars at a crack, those are things that come to the board, and we go through those, those different components. And so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. So next Monday night, we have our board work session, it'll be right here. We start at 5:30. We just have two items as of right now that'll be on the work session to start, which is we're going to go over our open enrollment numbers, so we're ready to do that in January. That usually doesn't take terribly long. Tim will have a piece on safe routes to school. And then at 6 o'clock, we'll have the first firm, 7 o'clock, second firm, 8 o'clock, the third firm. I just put them in, they all wanted to go last, and I just put them in alphabetical order. And so, to make life easy, and, but, and then we'll conclude that evening with a closed session to discuss, similar to what we did when we met on that Saturday. Remember, we did this last time, it was on a Saturday that we did these things. And then from there, the board can kind of talk through these things. Did they meet the obligations? You could reject all of them, you could, you know, we could have lots of different conversations. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of where we're at with the facility committee and the direction that we're heading, or facility advisory committee and the direction we're heading. Questions on that? Okay, hearing none, and move on to the next one. Update on the high school principal hiring. And I'll be sending something out to staff this week as well. What we've, what we've done is we've kind of put together, you know, a loose timeline of what our plan is, and we talked about this when we had the opening. We posted the vacancy on November 25th. On weekend, the Wisconsin Leadership, School Leadership Center, Mesa, and NASSP will close that vacancy about January 2nd is what the plan is. We'll be doing some virtual interview, screening interviews. What that consists of is usually them having to answer a couple of questions via video system, and then kind of start to shrink the pool down so we know who we bring in then for full interviews. The in-person, that'll be the week of the 6th. The in-person interviews would be the week of the 27th of January, and then, you know, the goal would be the final candidate would be selected, you know, no later than the week of February 10th, and that also corresponds with a board meeting. And so this process will involve lots of different stakeholder groups. I think, right now, I have eight different stakeholder groups that'll be involved in the hiring process. So it's a, it's a big coordination. It will be done at the high school. The last time I think we did something this involved was two principals ago, and that was done down at the PIPs, but we're going to do it at the high school. I just thought, if it was me interviewing, I'd want to see where I'm going to work, and I'd want to see what the environment's like, and I would want to know what those things are. And it'd always make me nervous if I was interviewing for a job and they didn't quite let me see what I was getting myself into. So I think we'll, we'll have it at the high school, so there's a lot of logistics, because, you know, we probably will have anywhere from 100-plus people involved in the process. So we start thinking about candidates being on site for eight, nine hours at a time, 100-plus people being on site for all that time, and making sure they're fed, and making sure there's parking, and making sure all these different things. So there's a lot of different moving pieces to this, and we'll kind of, we'll work that process and get a recommendation of the board for that week of February 10th. Questions?
Mr. President, I was wondering, with this round of principal for the high school, I was interested in knowing, and I know I'm getting into your area, but are you looking for a particular credential, academic credential? And then I was wondering if there were any specific leadership qualities that you're targeting that are kind of related to some of our newer initiatives? For example, we've talked recently about the bilingual, importance of being bilingual and valuing it anyway. And so I was just curious if you had, like, some, among your administrators, some kind of targets that you were looking at for leadership?
Carrie and I had discussions that we thought it should be an Iowa State grad. So that is, no, it's really, as we look, as we look through these things, Sue, a lot of it, as we start building the interview questions, and that, that'll happen over the next couple of weeks and things, it kind of starts to shake out as far as, you know, what things you're going to be looking for. I mean, I think the biggest thing when we think about the high school, anytime somebody's leading a building that has over 1,800 kids in it and 200 employees, you know, we want someone that obviously can understand all the moving parts of what that means and all the ins and outs, that they make sure that, you know, we're representing all kids, that we're working through some of those things. It will be interesting. Candidate pools are not as deep as most people would think. There's just, there's just not that many people that can take on that level of responsibility. And so, you know, I think those, those would be some of the big things. I mean, we have, a lot of the big initiatives that we've done in the district are a lot of things that is kind of a statewide, statewide initiative, whether it be, you know, the stuff that we're trying to work through, some of our equity programming and some of the things like that. We would expect a candidate for the high school position to have a background in equity and understanding what all means all for all kids. You know, it would be great if they understood kind of the continuous improvement process and things like that and had a good handle on that. However, because the whole team's going through that training right now, it's not as though it's something we can't bring them up to speed on. So, but hopefully, you know, we continue to get good candidates to apply, and it's pretty early because most candidates don't have their stuff just ready. It's kind of like, once it goes out, oh, well, yeah, maybe I might be interested. Now it takes the time of getting all the letters and all of those different components, and so, but, yeah, we're looking forward to it. And part of the description and the job description, I could have attached that, and I could send it out to you guys, where we just kind of talked about some of those, some of those components, not as specific as bilingual or things along those lines, but really, we want a candidate that really will represent all of our kids very well, so.
Any other questions or comments about the process? I just clarification, because it says week of February 10th, final candidate selected. I think our meeting, our actual meeting in February is on February 10th. Are you seeing the week of, just in case a decision can't be announced at our February 10th board meeting?
Yes. All of those week ofs, I mean, we actually have the hard dates kind of picked in a lot of those things. But yeah, if something goes awry, because this, the same schedule is what we put out to candidates as well, because we want to make sure that everybody has the information put out to staff and things along those lines. So, but yeah, I mean, it's, February 10th is a Monday. We would anticipate that the recommendation would go to the board, you know, that night would be our expectation. But, you know, that, I mean, that gives us about a week and a half, but a lot of our, a lot of our background checks happen and reference checks happen even before they get to that final candidate stage.
Well, thank you for that report and that process, and we'll all be praying for you guys. So, next up?
Next up, update on the school start advisory committee. Again, you guys talked about this at the board meeting, I just wanted to kind of, for the public, not that they're all not public meetings, but for the actual work meeting here, wanted to remind people that the board did approve kind of the plan. We made sure we made some adjustments. We have some healthcare providers added to it. We updated some of the dates and things along those lines. But the, I think invitations and those things, Tracy, those are going out... Before, before we head to winter break. So Tracy and Aaron and Dave are spearheading that. So that, that kind of that all call will go out to people wishing to be a part of that committee, and then they'll start down the process of narrowing it down to a manageable group, so. Questions about school start time advisory committee?
May I ask, who's in charge? Tracy?
All three of them are.
All three of them, okay. I forget what I was going to ask. Oh, do you expect to get a full complement, you know, the speculation of, you know, yeah, I mean, will we get, I can't remember what the total is, but do you think we'll get everyone to fill those slots?
It's like 36, 40 people, right?
Yeah, okay. Oh, good. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, our big thing, as you saw from the map over there, is wide representation. We want to make sure that we're trying to hit all the different areas of the district. Obviously, we're pretty confident we can make certain principals be a part of it and different, different off-district administrators be a part of it, hence the three of them that are leading it. So, but yeah, I think the parent involvement, a lot of times what happens with these Sue is we end up with way more people than we can, you know, specifically have in a committee. And that even happened with the school boundary, the elementary boundary. We had to kind of narrow it down based on making sure we're getting good geographic representation from all the buildings, so.
Yes.
We had talked last...
Up.
We had talked last time about, I know during the school boundary committee, that for some parents, childcare was a barrier. Are we going to be able to offer childcare for folks who are participating in this committee?
We haven't discussed that yet.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's something we, I mean, we can absolutely do it. Adds to the cost, but it's not, not something that's outside the...
I think that would be great if we were able to do that. Yeah. Great, thanks for looking into it. Appreciate it.
And so we're, I like the general process, very good job setting this forward. It's tracking, you know, our prior community engagement on, you know, major issues, whether it was PST or the boundary committee. I think the idea of information gathering before we start reaching conclusions, but then getting some feedback along the way, develop the options further, and then get more feedback from the community, I think is a, is a good route to take, so. Again, we're looking forward to seeing that recommendation sometime in the fall of 2020, so. Anyone else? All right. Last but not least?
Oh, my last item on the, my report is we have an upcoming school board election, as we do every year.
Is it December already?
Well, it is December already. So declaration of candidacy must be no later than January 7th this year, which is actually quite a bit later than past, isn't it? When was it before? Was it? The 2nd, yeah, that's what I thought. I say quite a bit later, it just, it seems quite a bit later. But the last date, do you know what the last date is for current members to file intent not to run? I should have said something to you before.
It's usually like 10 days before the deadline, usually, but...
Do you remember?
I don't, it's December something.
It's December something, so sometime between...
Soon.
And sometimes Tim won't let you leave.
But, so both Heather and Carrie are up for election, or reelection. And so the election is on April 7th, so Tuesday, April 7th. If there needs to be a primary, then the thing that determines a primary is if there's more than twice as many candidates, isn't it, Tim? Then we have open spots, then we would have to primary down. So, and kind of, kind of go that route. So, questions about school board elections?
All right.
All right, hearing none. That's all I have for my reports.
Well, then, do you want to take the state report cards first, or the partnership with the transportation?
Why don't we have Dave take state report cards?
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Very happy to share our state report card data with you this evening. We're proud of the results. Our students did an amazing job, teachers did an amazing job. We're feeling very good about the progress we've been making. Couple of things I want to say, actually, Tim, if we can reverse that and start, please, with the actual report cards? Thank you. Couple of things to mention before we start. None of this data is really new data. This is stuff that we've all seen before. It's represented in our scorecards, it's represented in the individual reports we've given regarding ACT or forward data. It's just a different way to look at it. We take the data, or the state takes the data, and looks at it primarily in four priority areas, and I want to break those down a little bit. So first, this is looking at the district report card. The file you have is the district report card, and then each of the report cards for our six schools. So we'll have the, we have all of those report cards, our six elementary, and then the two, the high school and middle school as well. Each one individually scored, but then the aggregate here as the district. So if you look in the upper left-hand corner, we've got the overall score. That is calculated by looking at those priority areas on the right. If you notice the priority areas, almost all of them, other than on track for post-secondary readiness, is made up of data based on reading or ELA and math. And there's always a comparison to the state. So if you look at student achievement as an example, that 78.7 is the district score, made up of the ELA and the math achievement score directly below that, as compared to the state to the right at 62.3. So in each of these measures, we're always able to compare to the state to make sure that we're looking at, at our, our own achievement in some way that would make some sense. And that, so student achievement is one of those areas? Uh-uh. It's exciting stuff, I know, I can.
There was time Dave talked, he's got to reach for the pop.
Well, maybe it's the fact that you've got two there.
Maybe not, not all.
So we've got student achievement, and when we look at student achievement, what we're looking at is overall achievement, a measure of the knowledge of the kids in this school year. So in this case, the 18, 19 school year, that's it, just their results in math and ELA. Growth is different, in that growth looks at the change from one year to the next for all of the students that are tested. So looking from one year, and then the total growth. Points are awarded by students moving from one level to the next, from basic to proficient, proficient to advanced, and so forth. And then closing the gaps is the hardest of the measures to understand, and it's actually in many ways, the most important in terms of the report card. And I don't mean it has more value than the other measures, but the report card adds value, because it's the one that you can't calculate on your own. We could pretty much figure out what our growth would be, we know what our achievement is before we get the report card, based on our ACT and our forward results. Closing the gap would be very difficult to calculate, because there's some complex calculations that go into it. Essentially, what it measures is looking at a group of different subgroups of students, rather, compared to the state. So we look at students in different race categories, English learners, students with disabilities, and students that are economically disadvantaged. And then we compare students in our school district against the rest of the kids in the state that are not part of that group. So if we're looking, for example, for students that are economically disadvantaged, we'd compare our students that are economically disadvantaged against the rest of the students in the state who are not economically disadvantaged, and that's the concept of closing the gap. The achievement gap exists between subgroups and then the rest of the population. So we're always looking at closing that gap and having those subgroups perform stronger as compared to the overall population. Another thing that's important to look at in closing the gaps is there's a concept called cell size, which means we need over 20 students in any of these categories in order to calculate them or count them in these calculations. And that's calculated by each school. So as an example, Holton, being a smaller school, might not have enough students in any one category to count as a separate cell. But then you can, what's called supergrouping, and supergrouping is taking students from multiple groups, putting them together until you pass that cell size of 20, and then you compare accordingly. So that's the closing the gaps, again, probably the most complicated. And then the final priority, on track for post-secondary readiness. This is one that's a little bit different, in that it looks at things quite a bit differently. High school, we're looking at graduation rates, all levels, attendance rates, and then the elementary, we're looking at third grade ELA results, achievement, and then eighth grade math. That's based on longstanding research that suggests if a student is reading at or above grade level by third grade, the likelihood that they will continue to read at or above grade level is greatly increased. So that third grade is sort of that hinge point, where you really want kids solid by that point. Interestingly, it's our first assessed year at the state level, so it's the first time we have a state measure that will help us understand how we're performing. And then that same sort of research exists at eighth grade. If students leave eighth grade algebra-ready, they're much more likely to be successful throughout the continuation of their high school math career. So that's why the state selected those two areas. So now we will go to, we won't go through each school. If anyone wants to spend more time on that, you can ask questions. If you'd like to meet separately to dig into the individual school reports, that would be great. Each one of these reports has a multiple-page document that gets into a lot of the details. But we'll go to the analysis document now. Thank you. So first thing, I mentioned that we're very proud of our students and our teachers. So we're at the, in the upper 8% of all districts, if we look at the overall score compared to all states in the state, or all schools in the state of Wisconsin. If we look at just K-12 schools, we're in the upper 5%. So very proud of that, very happy with the progress we've made. This is the first time that all of our schools are in the exceeds expectations category, or the significantly exceeds category. And it's the first time the district has been in the significantly exceeds category. So again, good things happening there.
Just, can you reject real quick?
Yeah.
Couple other items on there. The, the school district, we scored the highest out of any other district in our CISA. So we scored higher than any other school district in our CISA. We also are the highest-scoring school district for our size. So there are no school districts larger than us that scored higher than us on the state report cards. We scored at the 32nd spot out of, I think, 420-some school districts. So there were 31, as Dave said, 31 school districts that scored higher than we did on the state report cards, but of which, I think 11 of them were elementary-only districts, and two of which, I think, were high school-only districts. So 13 out of the 32 weren't even, they weren't even K-12 districts. And so it is a tremendous accomplishment to our staff, to our principals, to Dave and his department, everybody that is working towards this, because this has been something that we're, we've really been striving to really look at, at how we can continue to improve. And as Dave said, the bottom one, the closing the gap score, has been a big focus for us. We're really trying to make sure that when we say all means all, it does, and we're working through that. So really, really, really happy with the results. Obviously, we can continue to get better, but we are definitely making, making progress.
Okay, thank you. So if we take a look, just quickly, we'll go through these graphs. And the reason I generated these, these charts is that each year is individual, and it's important to look at the progress over time. So this is the aggregate of the different priority areas on the report card. So this first graph here is the district trend. So you can see the upward trend overall. You can see that achievement is actually slightly aiming down. We're going to talk a little bit about that in the future. Then you can see the nice, sharp increase in growth, and again, in closing the gaps. This is district-wide. On track for secondary, post-secondary readiness, we're going to skip over that, only because there's so many different pieces, and the aggregate isn't all that meaningful. So you can see in this area, the closing the gap, really, really solid, also great growth. If we take a look at the next slide, we'll get more specific. So here we are, looking at the elementary level. So that elementary trend, overall trend up, we can see that the achievement is starting to trend upward as well at the elementary level, and we've shared that in a couple different examples. Again, growth looking very good, closing the gaps moving upward. And Nick mentioned the closing the gap, the work, the closing the gap work that we do. If we look at closing the gap as an individual measure, it is probably our best global equity measure. Now, it doesn't get very specific, a state report card never will. It needs to be relatively general, it needs to be high-level. But if we look at the one measure on the report card that says, how are we doing with our equity efforts, the closing the gap would be the one that we'd want to look at. We can see here at the elementary trending up very nicely. If we skip to the next one, please, then we have middle school. Middle school has some interesting trend, because you can see in that one year, there was the dip down, both in growth and achieve, or growth in closing the gap, and then stair-stepping up nicely. So that team is doing some great work there as well. Again, if we look at achievement, aiming down a little bit, that's going to be what we'll be focusing on in the future. And finally, we'll take a look at the high school. I want to point out, there's only one growth bar. This is the first year that there was a growth measure for the high school. Up until this point, there was not a growth measure. They only had the other three areas. Slight uptick in this last year in achievement, but relatively flat as well. But closing the gaps, again, are skyrocketing up. We're feeling very, very good about that. So overall, things we're very proud of, the growth and the closing the gap, obviously. Our continued area focus needs to be on achievement. And I wanted to point something out, because there's this interrelation to all of this data. If growth trends positively, and closing the gaps tends, trends positively over the years, achievement will follow. Because what we're saying is, all students are growing, and the specific subgroups that we want to make sure we're paying special attention to are also growing. So then, achievement would follow. The inverse exists as well. If achievement for all goes up, then we'd expect closing the gaps to go up and growth to go up. Having said that, overall achievement is our one area that we continue, that we'll need to continue to focus on. And you might ask, and I asked myself, you know, how is it that we can have achievement that's flat or dipping, and these other areas that are shooting up so well? Well, part of that has to do with the students that are making the growth. We're seeing great growth in students that were struggling to meet proficiency, we're increasing the percentage proficient, but we're not seeing that overall percentage of proficient, advanced grow to the same degree. It's going up, but not to the same degree. So we need to continue to focus on that, I think, and Nick has explained this in a couple different settings. Our greatest area of focus in terms of a group of students is the group of students just below proficient. That's where we have the greatest leverage and the greatest ability to help our students be successful. So we'll continue to focus on that group. In closing, this data has already been addressed, but it's nice that the report card gives us a different perspective. It lets us look at things a little bit differently. But the principals and their SMART teams, which are the groups that, the teams that work on achievement data and achievement initiatives, they've been looking at this data for a while. I would say that the closing the gap was probably the greatest surprise, again, because we weren't, you're not able to calculate that in advance. But in looking at it, feeling very good about where we're heading, and look forward to continued success. Questions?
Questions about the report cards? Carrie?
Yes, you said, this is just clarifying.
Yes.
For third grade, the best indicator is if they're reading at grade level, and then at eighth grade, if they are algebra-ready. Is that proficient in algebra, or ready to take on algebra in ninth grade?
So the research wasn't that specific. The way we're looking at it is they're ready for algebra. The research was more general, because it was looking, it was sort of a meta-analysis at many, many different studies, but saying that it was really, the, the most important part of that data was saying, at eighth grade, let's make sure they're solid in math, and they're likely going to continue to be solid in math.
I'm sorry, so freshman year, they're ready for algebra?
Yes. And that, yeah, that's our goal as a district, is freshmen ready for algebra.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the report cards?
Just a quick comment. Some of these elementary, I mean, everyone killed it this year, but like, if you even looked at Hudson Prairie, 100%, 100 out of 100 in closing gaps. That's insane. That's just really impressive, to see the focus that goes into it. Some of the elementaries, I mean, Holton, Rock, just tremendous. So really impressive. Job well done.
You're absolutely right. The elementary division has really been knocking out of the park, both reading and math. So very, very proud of their work.
All right. Any other comments? But thank you for the reports. Always good to be able to report good news, and this is great news, and hopefully spurs us onto even better results for next year's report cards. All right. I guess we move on to the Transportation Alternatives Program?
Yeah, I'll take that one. So we're in the process of partnering with the city on some, this was formerly known as Safe Routes to Schools. And we're working on putting an application together for infrastructure grants. The grants, they're competitive grants, so there's no guarantee that we'll even get them. However, we're looking at about an 80% funding from the federal and state level. So it's something we need to look at doing, you know, anywhere from signage, different types of signage, for those walking and biking paths and routes to schools, to more infrastructure-type related items. So we're meeting, meeting with the city tomorrow, city staff tomorrow. We're going to be prioritizing and talking about our different projects that we want to cooperate on. It's kind of a, it's kind of a unique opportunity for us to cooperate and work together with the city. So a lot of good things can come out of this. As we look forward to the 16th, that's when we'll bring that list of items to you, I anticipate bringing that list of items to you, and the funding levels for those, for the district portion, and you'll be able to see what the city's looking at as well, the city portion. So just wanted to give you, give you a heads up that that is coming down for the next meeting.
All right. Any questions on Tim's report regarding the Transportation Alternatives Program and our partnership with the city on that? All right, seeing, hearing, none, and now we'll move on to the action items, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items, including the expenditures with the language that we have on the screen.
Move the approval of the consent items, and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,415,749.64.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, including all those personnel changes and so forth that go with it, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion is approved. And I think, being retirement season, we have a few retirements.
It is. Yes, and so I wanted to list them. Mary Schaefer, she's a North Hudson Special Ed para, who has 23 years of service in the district. Bill Schaub is a FIAE teacher at Hudson Prairie, he has 26 years of service. Dan Baumgartner is a music teacher, AP Rock, he was here tonight, 28 years of service. And Stephanie Harret has a science teacher at the middle school, and she has 26 years of service as well. So quite a few years of service with this crew so far. We will certainly be recognizing them in additional banquet and opportunities.
All right, excellent. Thank them very much for their service, and work with all the students over, that's a lot of students over a quarter of a century, so. All right, moving on then to approval of, since we have a theme tonight about music, the Advanced Placement Music Theory Course proposal.
Yeah, so, yeah, it is a theme.
All right, Dave, okay.
Well, it's okay. We can, we can both take this one, but we wanted a relative depth on this one at the work session. Just wanted to bring it forward for your approval. Again, looking at AP Music Theory, it will be our first non-performance-based music course at the high school, which we think is an exciting opportunity, also fits well into our potential dual-credit opportunities, and also would be an offering that would be LAUDA-eligible for the high school honors system. Questions about this? eligible for the high school honors system. Questions about this proposal?
That's a great summary, Dave, because we discussed all those items and the importance of moving forward. And I know that we're starting to run out of areas we don't have advanced placement in, but this is one that we needed it. So this is a, a great proposal. Is there a motion to approve in a second?
I'll move that we accept the proposal for the music.
Second.
All right. There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Last on our action items is. What's that? Yes, it was. And last on is the post-retirement insurance benefit modification for program supervisors. Andrea?
Yes. So it's my understanding that Holly Butler was here to talk at the work session about this particular request, where our goal with this is to align the benefits more consistent with our organizational chart, where we had this one outlier with respect to the program supervisor position, which includes three different employees. That was, their retirement benefit was significantly less than anybody else on Hudson Lake. So our goal here is to align it with people in comparable positions such as the Dina students and the coordinator employee groups.
Yes, Holly did a great job presenting that. And again, we had much discussion about, you know, the impact of this. It's rather minimal because it doesn't hit that many people. But still, we don't want any group, no matter how small, to be big outliers or not on par with similar positions. So is there a motion, a second?
I'll move that we accept the recommendation for post-retirement insurance benefits for program supervisors.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. I now would entertain a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to the language in our agenda.